I will have the secretary read the notice for the public hearing.
Notice is hereby given that the Stafford Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on February 13, 2018 at 7:00 p.m. at Warren Memorial Town Hall. Veterans meeting, 1 Main Street, Stafford, Connecticut, 06076, to consider the following. Public hearings, Abashan Realty Company, Inc., 39 West Stafford Road, map 47, Lot 18, Zone Highway Industrial. Special permit application to construct two retail structures totaling less than 20,000 square feet in the highway industrial zone in accordance with Section 5.2, Line 16 of the zoning regulations, and a temporary waiver of 21 percent of parking under Section 6.2D. At this meeting, interested persons may be heard and written communication received. Copies of legal notice and related information are unfiled in the zoning office of the town of Stafford, Connecticut. Respectfully submitted, Nancy Rovetto, Chairman. This was in the Journal Inquirer, February 2nd, 2018, and February 10th, 2018.
Thank you. The procedure for the public hearing will have the applicant present the application. Secondly, then we will open up the discussion for the commission members. And thirdly, we will open it up to discussion with the public, any comments or suggestions or issues you would like to bring forward. At this time, I would like to establish a forum. To my left is Kathy Bakihaki. I'm Nancy Rovetto, Ronald Hool, and Cindy Romo. I will ask that Woodchuck sit in for Gene Julian, who was absent. So this evening, we have Guy Heskey. Would you like to?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairman, and members of the commission. For the record, my name is Guy Heskey. I'm a licensed professional engineer and principal at FA Heskey &amp; Associates. We're located in East Ramsey, Connecticut. We're here tonight representing Abashan Realty Company. Aiman Moran is also here as the owner. And we've got an application presented to you that you accepted at your last meeting. If you recall, we were here a couple of years ago for an application similar to this one, where we had over 20,000 square feet of retail proposed that included restoring the existing retail building that's located where the old bus station was. And we had a larger building in the back here, and then a small little coffee kiosk or bank kiosk up in the front. And we also had access coming from West Stafford Road. We had two drives, one in the rear for truck traffic, and then another one about midway or so for patrons. That application, the owner had looked for trying to get some tenants in there. It didn't pan out. He has a tentative deal with another retail establishment for this, so he's come back for a new application before you. So though it's similar to the one that you had, that we presented before, it was approved by this commission, it's smaller in total scale, and it includes two retail buildings instead of the three that we had before, and it's significantly less of a footprint. And I'll explain to you what the total disturbance of the site is going to be. So the site is located at 39 West Stafford Road. It's on the corner of West Stafford Road, which is here that runs east and west, which is Route 190, and Middle River Road, which runs north from West Stafford Road. And what we're proposing is taking the existing 10,900-square-foot building. That's going to be renovated, and that's going to be a retail establishment for the Abashan Hardware. The previous application, we actually had a small addition. I think it was 2,400-square-foot addition in the back. That's now off the table, and it's going to be a total of 10,900 square feet. So that's adequate for the use. And then we're looking at a 7,228-square-foot auto parts store, which we're proposing in this area here. And the total area of the site is about 4.05 acres. It's located in your highway industrial zone. We're requesting approval for these buildings here, and the associated site improvements, which is less than the 20,000-square-foot. Your regulations, if you have over 20,000-square-foot, triggers a bunch of different considerations for approval. Since we're under that, we don't have that trigger for some of the other requirements for your regulations. So we're looking for approval of these buildings, and also, as part of our application, we're requesting a waiver of some of the parking spaces, specifically 21 percent of the required parking spaces. Your regulations under Section 6.2A B provide for a waiver, a temporary waiver of parking spaces, up to a total of 50 percent. The reason for that is some retail establishments that are not parking intensive, there's no reason to develop a lot of the site just to have the parking if it's not really needed. The regulations require a total of, it's shown on the sheet, LA1, a total of 73 spaces when you look at the total square foot and divide it out. We've got a total of 76 spaces proposed, but we're looking for a waiver of a total of 15 parking spaces, which is 21 percent of the 73 required. We're proposing the parking spaces between the two retail establishments, and then the waived spaces would be six located here along the western side, northwest side of the Abashan, another nine spaces in front of the Abashan for the total of the waived parking. Access is proposed through the driveway, a 24-foot-wide driveway to West Stafford Road on Route 190. And that would be primarily for patrons, automotive traffic. You may see an occasional small vehicle similar to the size of a FedEx truck or UPS truck. It's designed to handle an SU-30 vehicle, which is the size of a single-axle small truck. The trucks for deliveries, the larger trucks, will be entering the site by coming up Middle River Road and turning into the site. We provided in the rear 100-foot radius that will allow trucks to do a 180-degree turn so trucks can come in, they can spin around back into the loading area behind the Abashan, and come up and either pull in or on the way out, pull into the loading area that's behind of the proposal auto parts retail. So the loading spaces per your regulations are provided. We are reducing the number of curb cuts on Route 190. Currently, there's two curb cuts. There's one that serves the existing residential home that's on the property. It's another large curb cut. I think it's about 55 or 60 feet wide that serves the existing building that's there. We're going to close that one off, close off the one to the house itself, and replace that again with a smaller 24-foot-wide driveway. We do have some dumpsters located. Got one located here in the rear of Abashan, and we have another dumpster behind the auto parts store. The one behind the auto parts store will be screened. There's a detail in your plans. It'll be a vinyl fence material similar to the dumpsters, if you recall, the ones that we did up at Woodland Springs, Avery Park. If anybody has gone up there, you can see them if you go up by the units. They're a concrete pad with an enclosure in there so that the dumpsters are kind of out of mind, out of sight, out of mind. And it also helps for any trash that might blow out of the dumpsters to be contained within that area. Abashan is proposing a couple of outside display areas. One of those will be in the area along the northwestern part of the site where the waived parking is proposed. And then on the eastern side of the site, there's an area here, it's a concrete pad that's shown on the plan. That will be another outside display area. If you go by the existing hardware store right now, you'll see there's seasonal things that are stored out there. It could be, this time of year, you'll see snow shovels, things of that nature. Lawn chairs in the summertime, things of that nature that you see at the existing store will be seasonal items will be sold and stored outside. In this area up front, we also have a above-ground propane tank, and that'll be used for a propane refilling facility. And that'll be enclosed with a wrought iron gate-type enclosure, fence and gate enclosure. And that's not to provide fuel for the store itself, but it's for customers who want to come up and fill their propane tanks, they'll have the ability to do that. All the buildings that are proposed meet the setback requirements for your regulations. And your regulations also require a landscape buffer. The idea being that within areas that are proximate to the street lines, there's a sufficient landscape buffer to hide the parking and provide for some vegetation between the parking areas and the roadway itself. Your regulations require a 30-foot landscape buffer. We are proposing to respect that buffer with the exception of a very small strip that's located here in the front of the parking for the auto parts store, and then the waived parking in front of the Abashans. And I'd like to point out to you that under the existing site condition, there's an existing non-conforming encroachment, or the existing parking area that's located here in front of the Abashan comes all the way up to the property line. And we estimate there's about 3,200, almost 3,300 square feet of paved area within your landscape buffer, within that 30-foot buffer. We're going to reduce that to less than half. So what we're proposing is a total disturbance of 1,500 square feet, so less than half of that buffer. And that's only if these reserved spaces here are constructed. If not, then the encroachment is even less significant. If you recall, I think it was the last year they finished, it might have been the year before, Middle River Drive and West Stafford Road, the water main was extended all the way up past the big Y on West Stafford Road, and also up Middle River Drive, they installed the water main. So we do have water service. The existing building is already on the water service because the existing main, or the old main ended here. It's continued up, and now we have an ability to tie in to the potable water on Middle River Road, and that's the Connecticut Water Company. We've shared plans with the Water Police Control Authority. They reviewed it and indicated that there is adequate sanitary sewer capacity. We propose tying in the auto parts store to an existing lateral that's located on the property that drains into sanitary sewer on West Stafford Road. Electric telephone and communication services are available at the site. We propose to maintain the existing services, which are overhead services on this portion of the property. And for the new service for the auto parts store, we propose coming in off an existing telephone pole, that's a utility pole that's located either on the corner here or here, depending on where the utility companies allow us, and that'll be an underground service that'll come to the facility. We don't know if they're going to require us to put a transformer on the site. Unfortunately, when you're working with Eversource, they don't really tell you specifically if they're going to use can transformers on the poles, or if they want you to come with something underground. But we have adequate space to have those facilities if they do require that. Once we make application of them for construction, then we'll work out the details with Eversource in the field, and they'll tell us where they want us to come in. Regarding stormwater management, if I can find my grading plan. That's showing your grading plan, part of your package. If you look at the existing topography of the site, if you're in West Stafford Road facing the building, the land slopes upward, obviously, towards the rear, and you can see the contour lines in the back. It's pretty steep up in the rear of the property. We think several years ago, some of this material was mined out of here and removed. There's a lot of good sandy material on the site, or as part of the construction when the original gravel drives were put in. But the natural drainage patterns, if rain falls on the site, most of the water runs towards West Stafford Road. A portion of it runs on the Middle River Road, but it all pretty much ends up in a storm drain system that the state of Connecticut owns down on and maintains out on West Stafford Road. There is a culvert, a private drainage culvert, that runs from the area in front of the house, goes actually underneath the road, gets picked up by a structure across the street, and then flows behind the, I think it's an auto repair business on the other side of the road, actually flows to a swale behind there, and then goes out towards the brook, way down in this portion of the project. So we're going to maintain the same drainage patterns. The water that's flowing to this 15-inch culvert, cross culvert, and bypasses the state system, we're going to maintain use of that by connecting a number of storm drains that'll pick up parking lot areas and the roof and discharge it into that area. And then the portion that's on the rear of the project, we're going to provide for a stormwater detention and infiltration basin located back here. And this will be located in the area that's currently characterized by a gravel surface. The gravel drive ends in this area here, right about where you see this clearing with that. That's all a gravel drive. So we're not really going to be clearing much more of the wooded area in the back, with the exception of an area around this portion to be able to construct our 100-foot turnaround. So the trees that you see there will remain. So hydrologically, the characteristics will remain the same if you keep the trees there. You get a lot of absorption of the runoff, and it reduces your runoff. But because you are paving these areas, you're going to have a decrease in runoff. Whenever you take something that's a field or woods and you pave it, you have more water to runoff. And hence, that's why we're proposing a detention basin. We'll pick up runoff from the rear portion of the site and portions of the roof runoff, and we'll drain it into a basin that's in this area here that's about four feet deep or so. And characteristically, it's in sandy soil, so most of the runoff that we introduce into that basin will infiltrate into the ground. And that overflow from that, we have a structure that sticks up from the bottom of the basin a little bit. When the water reaches a certain level, similar to a drain that you have on your sink, when it gets full, it'll drain out and then tie into the same system. So we've done a comprehensive drainage analysis, submitted as part of the record, and we've demonstrated that we will not have any increase in runoff for the 2, 5, 10, 25, 50, and 100-year storm. And I believe your regulations require mitigation for up to 50 and 100-year storms, so we do need that regulation, and that was included in the package. We also are proposing some trap hoods, last catch bases that tie into the system. And what that is, is you oversize your catch basin with a deeper sump, and there's a plastic structure that you insert inside, and what it does is it prevents floatable materials from entering the storm drainage system. So if you have styrofoam cups, or cigarette butts, or anything like that, most of that stuff gets trapped in there, and then they're cleaned out on an annual basis, or semi-annual basis. And then sediments that fall in these basins are cleaned out routinely to keep the runoff stream exiting the site as clean as possible. Sedimentation erosion control, we are proposing a construction exit on this portion of the site, and that's an anti-tracking pad, so vehicles that enter the site and leave the site, they go over a stone apron that helps reduce the amount of sediments that are leaving the site. We don't anticipate that to be much of a problem here because of the sandy soils. We also have the dark line just here with the X's, that's a silk fence erosion control. That'll be placed in areas down gradient. You can see them along the perimeter of the site, in this area, along this area, and around the end. And what that does is it helps prevent, during the construction, it helps prevent sediments from migrating from the site. It's a temporary measure. When construction is over and the areas are stabilized, those erosion control devices are removed. We do have a couple of permanent erosion control devices in this area along the pavement. On the east side of Abashan, we have what we're calling a two-foot apron of riprap, which is a crushed stone material. That'll allow, instead of having a curb and gutter along here, it's a sheet flow scenario where the pavement is at the same level as the adjacent ground, and water sheets flow over that area. Stone dissipates the energy, so it prevents erosion, and then that water flows to the area that's located to the east. This plan was prepared in accordance with the Connecticut Guidelines for Soil Sediment and Erosion Control. And this commission has the authority on behalf of the town to approve these sedimentation erosion control plans, and we're asking for your consideration as part of the approval to approve the sedimentation erosion control plan. Because the site is under five acres, we do not have to register with the Connecticut DEP for construction discharge of stormwater associated with construction and de-watering activities, but we are required to follow the guidelines that are established under their general permit, which we intend to do as part of our construction. And again, this plan follows those specific guidelines. As part of the submittal that you have for this evening, we also submitted a comprehensive traffic report. And the traffic report includes analysis of capacity at the intersection of the roadways to show we have adequate levels of service. And then as part of the approval process that goes sort of along with that traffic report, is we have to submit plans for review and approval by the Connecticut Department of Transportation. If you recall, when we first came before this commission a couple of years ago, we were in the process of doing that. DOT really doesn't weigh in on projects until after you have an approval from the local authority. So subsequent to the approval that we received from this commission, we went back and made full submittals of both the traffic report and some offset roadway improvement plans to the Connecticut DOT. And I submitted for the record at the last meeting, a letter indicating that the Connecticut DOT had approved the plans that I'm showing you here this evening. Even though they're not part of the site plan approval, they are part of the proposed construction that we're proposing. And since we've already gotten approval from the DOT for the plans, we're presenting them to you, so if you have any questions, we could answer those. Originally, we went in with what we call a 20-foot half section. Because we are proposing to have left-turn maneuvers from eastbound traffic on Route 190 into the site, the DOT had requested that we widen the road so that we would provide a bypass for traffic that would be not turning left but continuing eastbound. And that is usually attained not by creating two complete lanes, one for a dedicated left turn and one for a through lane, but providing enough width so that if a car is turning left, they stay close to the W L center line, and then another vehicle, passenger vehicle, will have enough room to get by on the right-hand side without hitting the car that's turning left. We originally proposed a 20-foot half section, so a total 40-foot width out of the roadway. The DOT came back to us, and as of the last couple of years or so, they're really looking at not a 12-foot lane, which they used to look at several years ago, but 11-foot lanes. So with the old design that they used to like to use, a 20-foot half section, they asked us to reduce it to a 19-foot half section, which is the standard. So we are having widening to 19-foot half section. It's one foot less than what we anticipated and presented at the meeting of last year or two years ago. Our traffic report indicates that there's adequate site distances provided for the 85th percentile speed in the maneuvers that are leaving and exiting the property. The location of our driveway, as we mentioned before, is a safer design than what was previously there with the two drives, and especially with the one wider drive. By reducing the width of driveway and reducing it to one drive instead of two, it's a much safer scenario to have. As I mentioned, Connecticut DOT has granted approval of the design. The contractor who's going to build this will still have to make application for the DOT for an encroachment permit. And essentially, what that is, is a trade permit, where the contractor will have to place a bond and insurance certificates, and then he'll receive a permit and schedule inspections with the DOT when this work is done. So this work all falls within the jurisdiction of the Connecticut DOT, and they'll be ensuring through field inspection and coordination with the contractor that the plan is built as they approved it. So having said that, we do have some architectural plans that we'd like to show. And Aiman, did you want to talk about those at all?
Please, yeah.
Okay. Let me show you, I guess, the old one first?
Yeah.
Well, maybe we can talk about this one here. And while he's doing that, I do have, for the record, some small-scale versions of these, so you can take a look at these. The first series that I'll pass out is what we presented at the, was submitted with the application, and what we presented at the last meeting for acceptance of the application. And then this second one is what, the revisions that have been made subsequent to that to include the architectural features that I believe the commission was looking for. So having said that, I'll let Aiman take over.
For the record, my name is Aiman Moran. I work for the Abashan Realty Company as their Senior Vice President and Treasurer, and I represent the owner here tonight. First, quickly go over an elevation that some members of the board have already seen and some members of the public, as it's presented very similarly, or actually the same, from September of 2016 when we presented last. Highlighting some of those components to the existing building. We're going to use two different paint schemes to break up the front facade of the building here with the existing brick, and that would be in a Cypress green light color. And then the upper section here, the two-thirds top here, would be in a lighter country cream color that looks exactly as it sort of sounds. We're proposing three cupolas to break up the elevation of the building, and that would go on the existing roof line, which we don't anticipate having to replace. We'll just do a tune-up per the manufacturer's specs. There'll be a new passenger, passenger, customer entry door here, and there'll be a new door on the center here. We're proposing non-functional barn-style doors to infill the existing overhead doors that the bus company used for, in the rear, I think they were using them for bus repairs, and then this section for probably just smaller vehicle repairs. But those will be infilled, the overhead doors will go away, and these barn sort of motifs will be put in. These white horizontal architectural features are just panels affixed to the existing metal that will break up the elevation, as I would like to refer to it as in the therms, one, two, three. And finally, in the front here, sort of customary to most hardware stores, you see there's an outdoor display that Guy alluded to. We're going to, we've proposed to add a non-structural but more ornamental canopy that will be lit underneath, have some nice decorative columns that will cover a display of snowblowers or garden chairs, like Guy said, depending on the season, and will sort of act as a buffer from the parking area into the entry area. Pretty similar to the entry, the front entry that's there at the existing store. There's about a 10-foot concrete-covered canopy area, and this is the same that we're proposing here. If there are no questions on this elevation, I'll switch to the next building. The first illustration, elevation was brought to this board a few weeks ago in our application meeting, and I'm only presenting it now for reference for improvements that we've tried to make since that meeting. Several members of the board added some nice commentary specifically towards various elements of that previous elevation, and also noted the architectural guidelines from Section 5108, architectural guidelines from your zoning regs. And I'd like to sort of use some of those to categorize some of the changes that we've made in the elevation of the O'Reilly Auto Parts building, which, as Guy mentioned, is the second building on the site. So one of the comments that was mentioned here was that there should be no uninterrupted length of facade exceeding 100 feet, and there should be incorporation of recesses and wall planes. And so what we've tried to do on the east and west sides, which are illustrated here and here, so if you're standing on 190, the right and the left, as Guy has written here, right, left, this is the area that'll be facing the Abashans. This is the area that faces Middle River Drive. We've broken up the sides with these parapet walls, which are dual-functional, breaks up the length of the building, but also Architectural Guideline 2A asks for variations in roof lines, shall be used in design of the buildings. 2B calls out the need to shield or screen rooftop HVAC. And 2C, appearance of flat roof shall be avoided, those are quotes from your zoning regs. And that, the parapet has been utilized to not only screen the HVAC, as you can see, you wouldn't be able to see, but has tried to illustrate here behind the parapet.
Oh, that's what that is. I have that circle on mine saying, what is that?
So the HVAC are now screened from this new parapet elevation. We also accomplished breaking up the perception of a flat roof with a parapet. And then, and also a commentary that came from the board asking that the length of the building be broken up, similar to how Family Dollar and Dollar General have the columns. Their buildings are a little bit deeper, so I think they have three. We've proposed two here. Moving along to sort of some of the other architectural elements, previously, this was all red. There was a commentary that the zoning regs, specifically 3C, ask for facade colors that are subtle, neutral, and earth tone. Some members of the board have brought in some photos of other O'Reilly Auto Parts buildings and examples of those colors. So I went back to those folks and asked that we make that sort of more similar presentation here. And so they've, we've established three tones of earth tones that we're going with. One will be this portobello color. One will be this portobello color. The lighter color is known as a latte, and the top section, concrete masonry unit, would be a softer tan. So this section here is about five CMU blocks high, so just under four feet, and that would be the portobello. And that would be established with just a paint color variation, then the medium color brown, and then the lighter tan.
Mr. Moran?
Yep.
I received a copy of a proposal in between the first one and that one, this one.
Yep. So we had, I had proposed stone on the front.
Right, which I thought was very, a nice presentation with the darker. And now they've changed it to what?
This is, this is a similar material as the CMU right above it, so concrete masonry unit.
Right, but they changed the color to the lighter.
Yeah, the proposed brown stone that you saw.
Right.
I was trying to establish the similar style color than the stone was. That looks a little bit darker, how that was printed out, but...
So they don't want to go with that? Okay. And then this column was a darker brown all the way up.
These columns, these columns here?
Yeah, you see?
Yeah, so they've moved away, we've moved away from that stone color, because that's four different colors.
Right, and that's what broke it up for me very nicely.
In the front?
Yes.
Okay.
Definitely. And then you carried that along the side, on the right side, which faces Obashan.
Yeah, it was, it was on the east and the west side.
And correct.
Yep.
And then the side on Middle River Drive.
Correct. I, I got that, what you're holding there.
You did see this?
Yes, I got that approved with a portion of O'Reilly, and then another portion of O'Reilly came back and said, we won't do stone as you have it laid out like that.
Can you do the colors if it's not this?
I can do any color, I can do any colors that they're, you know, they have in their book.
The color's not an issue?
I don't think the color is an issue.
Okay, all right, that's what I wanted to establish.
No.
I just wanted the commission to say, I don't know if they received that, this, the different, the column up and down of the same color, and it kind of offset the sign better than that representation, I believe. And the darker, making it the three, the really dark there was very nice. That can be different, but the sides, I think are, just the front kind of looked very, this just struck me as being very nice. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah. No, I, I, I think I'm...
The top, it really stood out.
I'm certainly...
Actually, it stood out, like, ooh, there's a, there's an auto parts store to me, honestly.
Yeah.
As opposed to all of that.
Yeah, so you're, you like the establishment of vertical coloring versus these horizontal color.
Vertical, up and down, and it kind of set off your front, and then the horizontal.
I don't have any problem with doing that and pushing O'Reilly to get that, that coloring.
All right, it's, it's just the color, so I don't think it's cost prohibitive.
Nope, nope.
And there, there, it's, one minute. Mr. Palmberg, unfortunately, one of our alternates, could not make it this evening, and he had a suggestion that I'd like to bring forward. On the left side, this, that is on the Middle River Drive where you see coming on 190, it's still rather plain, and he was wondering if perhaps some landscaping, like bushes. We didn't get a landscape plan for that side.
Yeah, so...
Yes, just some, the left side. Are you planting any gardens?
Yes.
On the whole side, planting, okay.
Well, we don't, as proposed, we don't have plantings all down the whole side.
Right, that's what I'm saying, because they're proposing as...
For the record, Guy has, we are...
Excuse me?
For the record, Guy has, we are proposing in the back corner here, that come to about maybe a quarter or so of the building, the white pines that screen the dumpster area and a portion of the building.
Okay.
And there are three trees that are proposed along here, which are the ARQs, which I believe are...
But that's along, that's along the road, not the building.
Red maples, yeah, they're located probably, well, in this area, it's about halfway between, and we're going to keep as many of these trees here as we can.
So that, that will shield that long stretch of plain?
Yeah, if you come this way especially, that's where we were sensitive. We have a bunch of shrubs that are planted here to screen the parking, and then leave these here, and then we'll just supplement it with a couple of trees here. So from this angle, you're going to have a lot of vegetation that's going to block.
Right, because that was a concern of Mr. Palmberg's.
It's, it's not illustrated naturally in this elevation where the trees are, but they're, they're, as Guy has highlighted, there's, I mean...
Yeah, there's three, three new trees in that series.
Significantly, significant trees, and then these are existing.
Yeah, those are existing trees that are there. Couple of them are good size.
The back third with the screening here.
Because how you had done the bus company, absolutely fabulous. It's going to look fantastic, and, and I know you would want the building next to it to look just as nice, that's for sure.
Sure, I agree.
I don't know, the rest of the commission members, did you, do you agree with the column going all the way up with the same color? Like I showed, or do you like what?
Say that again.
I wanted to know if you agreed that you liked that color going all the way up or no.
Well, I don't find it too bad, but I remember last time you had a picture. Do you still have the picture? Because here's another one that I found.
Yeah, we discussed that two weeks ago, and they, they, we showed different, where you had a parapet, so instead of the...
This is one, other store is up in, I think it's Michigan.
Right, instead of the peak, they, they have extended the road up, so it's not...
I'm just wondering if they would substitute this for that red.
What, you know, do you point?
Yeah, not, not this, this, on the front of the store.
Yeah. Is that white on the front?
Well, no, just that she had a picture, something like this, and it took, you know, it wasn't, the red wasn't there.
It was a white sign, but it was a very dark building, so it showed up.
And the last time you were here, it was, the front of the store looks similar like this, but the, the red sign wasn't there, it was, the sign looked something like this.
Okay.
Of course, is that a standalone store or is that part of the mall?
Yeah, so I, I think there was a challenge with that one, is that's an existing building attached to a CVS, which I can see quickly. So I don't know if they were using existing building conditions, but interestingly enough, and I'm, I'm learning this too, these auto parts, dollar store, some hardware stores to a lesser extent, are, have different programs and prototypes as it pertains to buildings that are attached to other buildings, and the sizes they can be and how they should look versus freestanding ones. We're, we're working with a freestanding one. I'm, I'm working with a certain set of architectural guidelines that they'll bless. So that wouldn't be in that set of guidelines, because it's, it's an attached building. It's similar to Family Dollar, it's similar to Dollar General. And so the parapets that we proposed here is kind of our solution to...
Well, you did follow the regulation of not having the flat roof. I just want the commission's input before we ask you to go ahead with that change. Ron and Cindy, do you like that, or would you prefer the, that they change it to the full up and down? I want all the commission's input, the top one.
Right, right. I don't, you know, it's hard. And to be honest, I think this one almost seems more in, in compliance with the, with the request for earth tones. I don't know, that just seems to add another...
Well, it's brown, so, you know, it's not...
Are you pushing for this?
No, I'm not pushing for that. The column up and down, I just thought it set off the sign better.
So rather than stop at the page you wanted to go up.
Right.
It does frame it better.
I thought it framed it better. I thought it'd be better for you.
Yeah.
Do you see how it frames the sign better?
Yeah.
It really catches your eye.
So we're not looking for this brown on the...
The up and downs.
You're like the vertical component of it.
Yeah, so you would fill, you would fill in, fill in this.
Just that.
Yeah, then how about over here, which you carried around over there to...
Well, you know, what about the size, Dave's saying, yeah, that would probably even break it up even more.
Just all the little tacks, one, two.
Just the columns, make them the same colors. Would that be acceptable, Mr. Moran, to the...
You started doing that.
It's acceptable to me. I can bring it back to those folks.
But is that going to make it look like three buildings?
Yeah, I mean, what we were trying, yeah.
What do you mean, three buildings?
Well, you're going to have columns going up, they're going to look like additions on top of the main square.
Oh, you may have an idea there. I would say just the front, to frame the sign. I thought it just caught my eye.
It's a, it's a nice, it's a nice comment, and I happily bring it back to O'Reilly to see if...
The columns look nice.
They're comfortable with it.
You like it to?
Yeah, I think I make a...
I think on the sides, it's going to make it look like...
Too much on the sides.
A box, and then two additions attached to it.
But you notice O'Reilly is higher in the building, on that particular one drawing, which I think looks nice.
Very nice. I like the sign on the side, too. Very nice. Well, if...
Otherwise, you drive by it before you don't say.
You do, it's, it's too... All right, thank you, thank you. Is there any other questions on anything for Mr., ask for Mr. Moran, the commission?
I do have the, I have the certificates mailed in, and the side proposed.
Very good, thank you.
In the beginning, you said that the propane charging or charging station is going right on the side of the building. Is that too close to the building?
Um, no, we've...
We have like a thousand-pound tank within three feet of the...
Yeah, so the experience of the Obashan Hardware Company is in 85 communities in New England, and every community has their own guidelines through their own fire department. So we've had very unique circumstances where you can get a propane filling station in downtown Montpelier, Vermont, five feet from a building and high traffic, and other fire chiefs want it, you know, back in the corner, behind Fort Knox. We only, we only listen to the fire chief when he, his guidelines, what his state regs. So that's far enough in the building to meet the state requirements, but then we'll meet with the fire chief and make sure whether bollards, the fence, jersey barriers are sometimes requested, anything that he wants, we end up with.
Well, I remember something in Continuing Ed that it took, that the fumes would go up into the soffit and then the building.
Yeah. In my experience, we don't, I've never heard of that, but again, we will only do with what, what the fire chief or fire inspector, whoever the governing body is in town, will allow us to do.
You're going to have the outdoor sales behind that also, you said?
Yeah, that's not going to be, it's going to be more bulk storage area, so maybe top soils or excess top soils, pellets in the winter.
So it's not really a customer...
Not that area, the area next to the parking area that we're asking for a waiver, that will be more of a formalized garden, outdoor retail shopping area, springtime...
Like what's on the side now?
Yeah, but more, I think even more substantial in the sense that...
Pellets will go on the back?
Pellets will go on the back or on, on the side. So that'll be more storage, and if you're, if there's not your product, like a certain top soil that you have, and it's not in that garden area, then you might drive around back and, and grab a bag on the backside there, which is nice, because you can just kind of circle around the building and then...
Any other questions?
The only other comment I want to make is that if you could get on the blue, so red, I'd be a lot happier with it, but otherwise.
I'll, I'll pass along the observation to them. I know, I see the red on all their new buildings. I think it's part of their branding, the orange, the, the red and the, and the green.
But they do do it in other places, so...
Yeah, I'll, I'll pass along the, the suggestion.
Any other questions? Any other questions? If not, I'll open it up to the public. Prior to speaking, if you could just give your name and address, anyone?
PLPM syrup, 38 West Effred Road. After the first application was submitted two years ago, the applicant had to go for an encroachment permit. Does the same hold true after this application? Do they have to submit the new traffic report and everything?
Yeah, the traffic report, the previous traffic report was submitted. So the next application, a copy of the revised site plan will be submitted, and the, the actual contractor will make application for the encroachment permit himself. It won't be us, it'll be the licensed contractor that will make application.
Why is it different this time?
Well, it has to be a licensed state contractor. I'm not a licensed state contractor, so...
But you submitted it the first time?
No, we submitted plans for review, pre-application review to the DOT.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
Can I keep going? What's the septic situation for the existing building? You mentioned that the new building was going to tie into the street septic, but what about the existing building? What's going on there?
No, the existing building is tied into the sanitary sewer, and the new building will be tied into the sanitary sewer system.
The private catch basin, will there be increased runoff into that particular basin?
No, the storm analysis that we conducted shows that there's a net decrease in all of the storm events for the 2510, 2550, and 100-year event.
And even with the increased pavement for the driveway and everything, there'll be less going into that basin?
Yeah, that's correct, because we have a stormwater detention and infiltration basin which will mitigate any increase in people runoff.
For the board, what are the screening regulations for the frontage where a residence is across the street? Does it differ than if there was another business across the street?
I don't have that answer up top of my head. I believe it's with the abutters, so it's a move across the street, but I have to check that and get back to you.
Okay, could you do that?
Wouldn't it be based on the, on the highway industrial?
I think it's based on the zone.
It's based on the side of the side. Unfortunately, it doesn't, it doesn't differ based on abutting properties, it's all based on, on the zone.
So it doesn't matter what the use is that is in the abutment?
Not for the buffering, I don't think.
So if, even if there is no difference whether across the way is a residence or another business, what is the screening that's required for, for that location in front? And if you could refer to the regulation itself?
It's in highway industrial.
So the, the front yard...
Pardon?
Yeah.
Did you find it, Dave?
Yeah. Any lot developed for commercial or industrial used shall provide a land-stated area adjacent to the street line that is not less than the width specified in the table below. So in the highway industrial, it's 30 feet, and that's what you spoke to when you made the presentation.
Okay, does it specify what plantings need to be there?
One shade tree...
That's the length of, you got the...
One shade tree at least three inches in calibre for each 50 feet.
Okay. And that's it?
Yeah.
You got more than that there?
Yeah.
Much more than that there.
There's nothing in there right now.
No, I'm saying it's what he's proposing. We have four trees in the front, and bushes in between.
Is there anything else specific?
Yeah, so the widening of the road, my mother's property is going to be impacted as far as the stone wall is going to be cut into, perhaps the fence, the split rail fence that's there, her mailbox. Who is responsible for replacing those? Is somebody responsible for replacing those?
For the, the split rail and the mailbox, we're responsible for replacing those.
Okay, and the stone wall that abuts her driveway that will be cut into?
Yeah, on our plan, we show replacement of the split rail fence and hardware. The driveway will be repaved or paved, I don't know if it's paved now, to the right-of-way line. And then there'll be a radius, a 10-foot curve radius from the edge of the road to match the existing retaining wall that's there. Any other retaining wall that's within the right-of-way that's in conflict with that would be removed, and then a transition would be made from the existing retaining wall to the curb itself.
What about protection for the trees in her front yard? There's two maple trees in her front yard that they're going to get awfully close to, likely be cutting into roots, so what kind of protection is provided? And if the trees die...
These ones, or...
I don't think they're on your map.
Yeah, there's two that are in front of the house.
There's two right, there's two right here.
Yes, yes, yes. Yes, yes, yeah.
Guys, are some sort of... I've seen it before.
They'll have construction, fence placed around it to protect it during construction.
How do they protect the roots?
Well, whatever roots are within the right-of-way, they're, those are legally can be disturbed. They'll minimize the disturbance of those and restore that area when they're done to match the law on that side.
And in the future, if the tree should die?
I can't speak to that, if they should die or not. We'll take any, the contract will take any precautions that are necessary to minimize any disturbance to the roots itself. Again, all, any construction that he'll do will be totally within the right-of-way. They won't do any construction on your property, except for the fence itself, which is right on the line.
Correct, but it impacts things on her property.
Your desire is to keep the trees in their existing condition, right? Okay.
Sure.
Just wanted to make sure.
And then one final question. As far as the runoff on the east part of the property, you're saying that there's trap rock, trap rock there that will absorb the runoff, and then it will go further east, but that's the neighbor's property. Is that allowed to have runoff go to an abutting person's property?
Yeah, well, the existing drainage patterns that are there now will be maintained. In other words, the runoff that discharges to that area now, under existing conditions today, will be maintained following construction.
And you don't calculate any additional runoff?
No, there's no additional runoff to that, to that eastern property.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, I have a question.
Name and address, please.
Cindy Guerra, thirty-three West Stafford Road. She answered, she asked one of my questions on the runoff into our property on the east side with the trap rock. My question is on the retention basin that you're going to build. How big is that going to be?
Well, showing off the plan here. Do you wanna know like the area or...
Well, is there gonna be a retention or a detention basin?
I guess it would depend on how you define detention versus retention.
Is there always gonna be water in it, or is it going to drain?
Well, the way, the way it's designed is that it will, immediately following a storm event, it will have water in it. When the water reaches a certain elevation, it'll overflow through a high-level overflow. But we anticipate, based upon the soil, soils that are on the site and the test pits that were done, because they're sandy in nature and the groundwater tables deep, that any water that is temporarily detained in the basin will infiltrate into the ground below and recharge the groundwater that's there. So we don't anticipate there to be any, I don't know if you're referring to stagnant water or something like that, but we don't anticipate there to be any, any standing water within any significant time after the storm, say, twenty-four to forty-eight hours or so.
So it's not gonna be a pond, so to speak?
A pond with a wet bottom in it? Is that what you mean by a pond?
Well, like, if you were a retention basin where there's always a certain level of water in it at all times versus...
Yeah, we don't anticipate there to be any standing water in there for any significant time.
So then how are you gonna, my understanding is then you're referring, that you're describing more of a detention basin where it just fills after a storm, and then eventually dissipates down into the soil, correct?
Well, it depends. What it's gonna serve as is a combination detention slash infiltration basin. So water is gonna, typically with the detention basin, is you detain water and then you throttle it back at a certain level so that that water is dissipated over a certain amount of time after a storm. If you have an infiltration basin, and the main mechanism for that water below the outlet is to dissipate through infiltration into the soil, not through some structure to go out of the pond itself.
Is there any connection from the pond to the drainage system to the road? For overflow, or is it all just, you're just...
No, no, the overflow is, is part of the drainage system that will flow to the fifteen-inch pipe that's located in the road. This area here represents the detention infiltration basin here. And the contours on this are at elevation, the bottom would be at elevation five-sixteen. The outlet itself is at elevation five-nineteen. So potentially, there could be three feet of water in this after a storm. And anything that gets above that level will flow into a catch basin inlet and be piped through the site to the fifteen-inch storm drain that flows on the West Stafford Road. So water that comes into this basin here will infiltrate into the ground if it's above that five-nineteen level.
So how do you mitigate mosquitoes?
How do you mitigate?
Well, that's, that's not gonna be a mosquito haven.
I can't say that it would be, because if it doesn't hold water for a long time, we don't have mosquitoes in it.
But it's not gonna, you're, so you're anticipating it's gonna completely dry out between rain...
Yeah, the test pits that we did on the site show that the groundwater table is down pretty much at the level of the pond that I think you have over in this area here, about elevation. At this page of the site, about elevation five-fifteen or so.
This is a very shallow swale, too. I mean, we have, I've built one...
I understand that, but my concern is of a mosquito.
No, I hear your concern.
And I don't like the idea, I do not like the idea of what's there. I do not like that. My concern is mosquitoes.
Well, the interesting thing is, is the actual, the Connecticut DEP has two criteria for what they call primary stormwater treatment practices. One of them is actually encouraging you to have a wet bottom, where they want you to actually have a wet bottom basin, which is equal to the water quality volume, which on average is about one inch of runoff over the entire drainage area that drains into it. They actually encourage you to have that remain wet. Another option is to have an infiltration basin. So if we were to create a basin that was wet all the time, we would actually be meeting what the DEP requires in their stormwater quality manual. So we're opting to go for a system that, that will have infiltration, which is also considered a water quality, best management practice for water quality treatment. So, you know, as far as vectors of mosquitoes and things like that, I'm bound to design something that meets the two thousand and four DEP stormwater quality manual, whether it's a wet bottom basin or an infiltration basin that meets that standard. If there's an issue with, you know, mosquitoes or anything like that, that's something that you probably take up with the DEP. There's nothing that I can do to control if mosquitoes were to breed in an environment. What I have to do is, as an engineer, is design something that meets the design standard for water quality volume. And it would meet the design standard for water quality volume, whether it were infiltration or a wet bottom basin.
Now, why couldn't, why would the other plan that you had presented two years ago work on this site versus having the infiltration basin?
Oh, the one where we had a underground infiltration system? It would work here, except we don't have as much room as we had on the previous plan. So I would be, I would be entering water into an area where the building foundations are, and I prefer not to do that. These buildings are closer, again, if you recall, the other, the other site, that building back in this direction here, we had an infiltration system that was located up in this area here.
What is the size of that basin?
Again, volumetrically, or you wanna know the area of it?
The area of it.
I need my cheater glasses. At elevation five-eighteen, it's twenty foot by a hundred and fifty feet or so.
So how is it, what's, are you landscaping around it, or is it just a, more of a shallow...
It's gonna be seeded with a New England Conservation Wild Mix, wildlife mix, which includes transitional upland and wellings plantings, seed mix. Instead of normal grass, it has a lot of native species that are indigenous to this area that promotes stormwater renovation.
Super roots?
Yeah, birds and bunny-friendly type of stuff. The idea is that it won't be mowed once it's, once it's planted. It just goes fallow, and then the plants, the plants actually do a lot of uptake for any of the nutrients that are in the water, cleansing process.
So you're just going to let that area grow?
That'd be the intent, yeah.
I don't care for the plan. I think it's gonna be a mosquito haven. I really do. From the research that I had looked up on retention and detention basins, I think it's gonna be a mosquito haven. And being right on the east border of the property, I think it'll affect us.
I don't, because I think if you were to go out to the site now, you would see that there's a significant area of standing water that are located here in that little area, so I think they're significantly larger in number than... The total square footage of area that we have here is minuscule compared to the entire well and contiguous wetland community that's located between here and the adjacent residence, from what I've observed, honestly.
But they have different type of, you know, like turtles and frogs and things like that that is, that eat the mosquitoes in that wetland area that you're referring to. We're not gonna have any such thing in that grassed area. And that keeps down the mosquito population in that wetland pond near that culvert there. That's just my opinion, I think it's mosquito, there'll be a mosquito problem.
I think Mr. Haskett did note that it would not have any additional runoff. And it, maybe two years ago, you thought it would even be less.
Yeah, the, both the plans that we presented previously and in this application, because of the detention that we're providing in this area here, and we're capturing most of the runoff that's coming from the hillside itself, and small portions of the parking areas. Where all of that before used to go on, directly undetained to the fifteen-inch culvert, now we're taking about a third of the property, we're actually taking that water and introducing it here and detaining it, throttling it back, so by the time all of this water reaches this culvert, the overflow from this would be coming here. But even our, even our calculations show in a hundred-year storm, we don't even have any overflow. So we've oversized this to capture a hundred percent of the runoff entering into it. So the overflow is purely for academic reasons, in case there's significant back-to-back storms, that it would be able to handle runoff from that. Yeah, the drainage analysis...
Pretty sandy soil back there, isn't it?
Yeah, the site is quite sandy.
So it should leach.
Yeah, there's a transition area where you get up in here, where you get a lot of the rocks and the boulders and stuff like that. But the site itself is primarily a sandy matrix. There's some silt in it, but it's not significant. The test pits that we did out here, it was, you know, mason sand, beach sand.
Not a lot of clay.
No. It's very similar to, not too much different than what we found over behind the Big Y. I think this may have been a gravel pit at some time, years ago possibly, because this, this is kinda what you see. We found a lot of spaces like that behind the Big Y. You go out in the woods and you'd find these areas that were cut.
Like shelved in, right?
Yeah, they're shelved in, and there was a lot of, there was a lot of sand deposits from whatever the glaciers left behind in those areas. Some parts of town have really tight soils in them. I think up by the school, they had problems with that. This bench here seems to be characterized by a lot of sandy gravel materials.
Nancy, Donna Wright, ninety-five West Stafford Road. The installa, the new installations that were put in at Family Dollar and Dollar General, they all, they have new sidewalks on one-ninety. So does this installation not require that because it's an existing building? I mean, wouldn't, wouldn't the town benefit from having a sidewalk on one-ninety there?
We had, we had discussed that. And due to the, I think it was a culvert drainage, et cetera. We were, two years ago, let me back up, two years ago, when they were going to have the buildings in the back, we had proposed the sidewalk for the far corner, up Middle River Drive, because then that would be the pedestrian area. That is not the case now with this new proposal, because that back driveway is just for truck entrances. So we wouldn't have customers walking up the middle, you know, they would be going in through the front. And there was an issue that the state brought up also, I believe, and the DOT studied, said that it would not, they could not put it on the right side. And I think I can explain it better than I.
Yeah, that's a good question. The plan we presented a couple of years ago had a sidewalk that went from the right-of-way on this side of the property, the east, across the frontage, and then we had it come up and then the, into a driveway that kinda fed the second building.
I remember you were gonna have a coffee shop there possibly, a drive-in.
Yeah, we thought, yeah.
Little kiosk, you know.
So what happened when we, we had showed it on the plans, the commission had approved it with it, and they also, as a condition of approval, we had a sidewalk going up Middle River Road, Middle River Drive. When we went to the DOT, we went through about four rounds of design with the DOT to get these plans approved. Initially, we showed the sidewalk on the curb line, because that's the way they are in most other places in town. DOT said, no, don't put it on the curb line, we want it on abutting the property line. Because in the future, if they ever widen a road, they don't wanna be responsible for it. So we showed a sidewalk coming up along the property line, on the right-of-way side, but half a foot off the property line. And DOT came out and they did a field visit, and they said, why are you showing a sidewalk from here to here? Because there's no way to get to this, because there's guide rails, and there's traffic control boxes, and a bunch of other stuff. And in order to put that sidewalk in, you'd have to spend a half a million dollars removing all of that stuff. And they said, take this off of here, and we had a sidewalk going from here up the side. And then they said, well, we don't want you, we had a ramp out here, and we were gonna provide sidewalk access here. They said, because of a river bridge here, we don't wanna encourage pedestrians to use that intersection, so take that ramp off. So then we ended up with a sidewalk that went from this driveway up the road to this driveway, which doesn't really make a lot of sense, because no one's gonna walk over here and then come back up here. The whole idea was for pedestrian connectivity. So the plan we got approved by DOT, which is here, actually shows a sidewalk from here, coming up and going up to here. But they won't let us put a ramp in. Then, at the fourth round of comments, they came back and they said, well, we don't like the radius that's here, even though this is an existing town road and an industrial park. They wanted us to widen these radii to provide for access for what they call a WB sixty-seven vehicle, which is a wheelbase sixty-seven, which is the long-haul truckers with the big cabs on it and the fifty-four-foot boxes. So now we're widening this entire road intersection over here, which requires drainage improvements and everything else. So, which, and that's the other reason they don't like walks at signals, at intersections, unless they're signalized, because now with the width of that driveway, if somebody's walking across here, and it's gonna take them, you know, thirty-five seconds to walk across. So it's a dangerous situation. So they said, don't, we don't want pedestrians going across this intersection. So our latest plan for the DOT includes this widening. You can see here's the edge of the existing road. We're pulling it back about fifteen feet or so in here, and then this intersection's getting pulled back fifteen feet. We got these really sweeping radii on there, and then we gotta do all the drainage improvements associated with that. So this represents what the DOT wants us to do, as far as improvements on the site are concerned. So the sidewalk, we do show it on the plan, because the DOT is like, well, if you wanna build it, go ahead and build it, but don't connect it to our intersection, and don't tie it in over here, because you're creating a situation where people are gonna walk into the woods and then they get over there. So after four, our fourth round or fifth round of comments, we threw our hands up here and said, okay, this is our plan.
I would've preferred the sidewalk.
Yes, definitely.
We went back and forth on that, so...
The sidewalk would've been better.
So with the commission, we discussed it last, last week, and we presented the application for acceptance. And, you know, it doesn't make sense to put a sidewalk in from half of the driveway up the other, to the other drive. I think it would make more sense in the future, should, should there be a comprehensive sidewalk plan that were either prepared by the town or the town working in conjunction with the DOT, is to have, you know, possibly even on the south side of the road, might make more sense, just with the connectivity. Or if they have a master plan coming up. But a master plan is gonna have to include some of these crossings for culverts and stuff like that, and the railroad trestle, the railroad bridge, so it's, has to be, a lot of thought has to be put into it. This is what we ended up with. We didn't show a sidewalk on the current plan just because of that, we didn't think it made sense. We're hoping the commission agrees with this on that.
Are there any other questions?
Any other question? Cindy Guerra, thirty-three West Stafford Road. Any other question? Cindy Garrett, 33 West Alfred Road. Where do you anticipate snow removal, pushing your snow with the new design?
Yeah.
Is there an elevation on it?
My guess is most likely to push it in this area here and then run it back and then this area.
This area is fairly, I mean, this is a hundred feet wide, right?
Yeah, a hundred foot radius.
A hundred foot radius. I mean, this is a pretty large area that will.
Shells in the back too.
Realistically be underutilized. So I, I think a fair amount of snow can be stored here and then along this area here. We had discussed two years ago that you had concerns about them dumping snow on this side. And the response that I had to that was the same I'll have tonight is if that happens and you're concerned, you call me. And if you don't have my card, you'll have it in a second.
We do have it.
And then they won't do it anymore. So it's a local guy who we've been using to do just a very below-average job maintaining the site. And I apologize for that, you know, in terms of mowing and plowing. But he will do, that's my fault, not his. He will be doing the plowing and any concerns that you have, you've seen the voice to me and they'll, they'll be changed. But one of the things I'll point out to him that there should be no snow pushing on the east side of the site and it should be all towards the north.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I can entertain a motion. Would someone like to make a motion that we close the public hearing for Abishan Realty Company?
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, the Abishan Realty Company, signify by saying aye.
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 Unanimous. Thank you very much. We will now go to our regular meeting. We will call the meeting to order in the next quarter. On my left is, Brooks Warner is sitting in for Jean Julian, Akakiaki, myself, Nancy Lavezito, Mark Wolf, and Cindy Roman. The second item on the agenda is to review the minutes from January twenty-third. Excellent job. Nine pages.
Yeah, I didn't have any changes.
It's a shallow, it's three to one side slopes.
Can we have a motion to approve the minutes from January twenty-third, twenty-eighteen? So, do I have a second? All those in favor of accepting the minutes from January twenty-third signify by saying aye. Number three, discussion and possible action on the public hearing of Abishan Realty Company. Is there any other comments from the commission? Discuss? If not, a motion would be in order. Would you want to discuss? So with this, the discussion is we did like to. Picture, picture framing on the front, but not on the sides because then it looks like three different buildings. I know pretty, yeah.
The color, oh, can I clarify one thing about the color? Are you not in favor of the portobello, which is the darkest level? You want it darker than that? Are you comfortable with the portobello? What are they calling that, that color on your chart? The second color from the top?
Portobello.
Is it the same? Because I think the second down below.
Yeah, well, second down is portobello.
Yeah, so that's the same color that we presented here today. It's just the printout is different. I mean, the color, the ink is different.
Oh, all right. You extended it up to the top.
If we extended it like we discussed to the top, but I wanted to make sure that the color that we were talking about was.
It's a portobello, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, same thing. It just came out, it came out lighter on this one here.
Oh, okay.
She's asking that it goes all the way up to picture.
So, and is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Would someone like to make a motion?
Uh, potential motions. Okay, motion to approve the temporary waivers and the place fifteen parking spaces as provided by section six point two D. Okay, after reviewing the application information received with the public hearing. It has been found that this application meets or exceeds the zoning regulations. And that the standards and criteria in sections eight point ten and five point eleven have been met. In addition, the application conforms with the town's plan of conservation and development, particularly sections two point five, two point seven seven, and five point six two. Subject to the following conditions. Final approvals for sanitary sewer requirements to be obtained from the W B C A. Prior to the issuance of any building permits for the new building and kiosk. A pre-construction meeting be held prior to any construction with Z E O, Director of Public Works, and a town engineer building official. And as-built survey of the foundation be required prior to framing. And a complete as-built survey showing all improvements. Rating required upon completion of the site work and prior to the issuance of the C O. Following approval, five paper sets and one Malar set of plans shall be submitted, mylar set of plans. Shall be submitted to the Z E O for approval signatures. Plans set shall include the approval letter with conditions as well as a signature block for the Planning and Zoning Commission members. Following the signing of plans, the, mylar. Sets shall be recorded in the town clerk's office. One paper set of signed plans will be returned to the applicant. Signed permit shall be required for all signage. Performance bond in the amount of thirty thousand dollars or an amount determined by the commission shall be posted to the town staffer. The performance bond shall not be released until all the bonded work is completed to the satisfaction of the appropriate agencies.
Thank you.
I hope I can get a copy of that.
I think you might. The only suggestion I would have was that you mentioned the building and the kiosk and I sort of stole that from the last approval.
Yeah, the kiosk is no longer. We will, we will strike that as amended, amended, strike the kiosk. No, no coffee, right?
Do you want to say something about the colors around the door in the motion or do you think we have that covered?
I will do, I, I want to be on the record, I will do my best to get the portobello and the columns. I think I can do it. I don't know if I want the motion contingent upon it if I fail with O'Reilly, but that's the course decision to make.
Now, we, we closed the public hearing. It's either we approve or we deny. If we kept it open, I mean.
Well, that's a small contingency to get a building permit, so I'm sure he'll be.
There may be architectural, I don't know how they're handled, but there might be architectural tweaks as we go along.
There's always some site pain revisions that they can come back and ask for.
But you know what we're looking for.
But we go.
Correct.
This is color, it's not.
Is there a second on this motion?
One second.
And then any further discussion? So the motion to approve the application on Abishan Realty Company, special permit application. Would be applicable waivers, et cetera. And also to strike the, the word kiosk in the original motion. All those in favor say, signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
For review our zoning regulations, first on the agenda is agretainment rates. Good evening, Dr. Vasquez. Could you hand an emergency? You did your best. So. Did an excellent job. The accessory agriculture. And I am saying aye, Chair. This was from the last time. I took out my one from two weeks ago. Cross reference and. If everything was there. No, everything, everything was, was good with those changes. What we did, our concern was that we meant for a large-scale farm event. That it would be too cumbersome for a, a small farmer to have to do the three hundred and ten dollar permit every year. So the way we had changed it, seeing how it was changed to reflect that it was the one-time permit. But the permit was contingent upon violating the regulations and the review of the C E O. So that was an excellent job. Any other rest of your permission to breathe with this on a large scale?
We did, we did make a change to the large scaling fence where we talked about vehicles and we also talked about people. And we took the people out.
I don't know about you, but I remember we used to put about fifteen people in a roadswash.
Go to the driving.
Go to the driving, right? So I understand where people is not appropriate, but vehicles.
It didn't allow us to put that type of grass that he suggested that grows a little bit higher. He wants to implement, he wants actual grass in it, so.
So I think this is gonna go back to the commission tomorrow. I think we can.
I would like to put it to a public hearing.
Okay, well, let's, let's, um, let's see if we can schedule a public hearing for that second meeting in March.
I wouldn't want.
The first or second, thirty days.
A retention bond of water setting next to my house, just like you would have. And it didn't happen in this huge soil instance on sandy soil, so I have no reason to believe that we can design one that's only three feet deep that would, that would hold water. What it's worth, you have my word, if there's actual issues with it, meaning there's, there's water that's staying there. And mosquitoes are breeding, you know, like your concern, you have to call me and say, we need to do something about this, you know what I mean? Guy has to come in and design something and get, and get the water out of here faster. But I, I don't have any indication that when you see me at the grain open, you know, or on site or the manager.
And how about you, Doug? All the changes on that, et cetera.
I want you to feel comfortable that if there is an issue that you know, there's an issue.
So could we also have that be March?
So.
March twenty-seventh.
What then?
So that's, that's. Okay, the in-law part. Change the, yeah, yes. I have a question. I'm still confused, David. I know you can help me. We changed the J and took out originally intended. But the, the in-law apartment unit will be altered to return the house to its original status. I thought that's what we didn't.
Well, we left it in there so if people are gonna, if people are not gonna continue to rent it, then they should change it back.
Okay, I made that because I was. Because then K says an accessory apartment and, and it just seemed like there was a conflict between J and K, that's all. But it's not.
No.
No, I, I think the.
No, because we're gonna keep it that way even if it's a lot of deed restriction on it.
No, that's if you can rent it, make it an apartment. But this says it must will be altered to return the house to its original status. See what I'm saying? The, the.
Otherwise, you don't have immediate family there and now it is a two-family home if you're renting it.
And it's saying that, but it's not saying that in J. It's just saying it should, it has to be back to its original status. You see what I'm saying, Dave?
I, I understand. We could probably sort of tie those two together.
I think so.
So that we can say, I think we can tie them together into one statement. So you can either, you can either revert it back, which of course is your right anyway.
But I think, I think our intention was not to require that it be reverted.
This requires it and we don't want to require it.
In other words, where, where people add an addition.
Well, you want to just say maybe returned and so then it's just a wishy-washy statement?
Or maybe eliminate it altogether?
Altogether.
Yeah.
Okay, let's take it out.
Take it out? So K will become J?
Yeah.
And L will become K? Right, yeah. So the, so that was our intention.
Well, that's what I believe.
Yeah, okay. I kept reading and I'm reading. I said, what am I not understanding?
Well, because we sort of took it out and put it back and took it out.
Yeah. Yeah, but we didn't want, we didn't want families to have to incur the cost of demolishing.
And I like an addition, you know?
Yeah, an addition.
Even though it was still part of the house. Um, do you think this is good to go to the public hearing then? Public hearing, okay, with Doug? With you?
Is there gonna be any public input at all?
Pardon?
I, I think.
Oh, sure. What would you like?
I just think in reviewing the regulations, I was looking at the accessory building. I think there's two spots where it says refer to section seven point two F and then seven point three, or it might be reversed. But there's two spots. We're going to a hearing about other little changes and I, I just think that there were those two errors. Because it, it just doesn't make sense.
Why don't you, why don't you?
Talk to you about it?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll just.
Because there's other, there's other little things that we need to tweak that we can just put in.
The numbers, because we keep changing.
Right, yeah.
And taking in and out.
Exactly.
Eventually, the numbers will all be correct, but it's the content that we are working with now. That's what your concern was with the.
It, it's really not even the kind, it just refers you to like blasting when it's supposed to be referring to accessory building or something, but you know what it's about.
They're pointing in the wrong direction.
Exactly, just an error, that's all.
Yeah.
So we still want to leave that as March twenty-seventh?
Yeah. It's just verbiage that has to be changed, right?
Right, so you just circle, it's a seven point two F. In-laws, now we have to change all of those letters because we took that one out.
Well, you say you're saying K or J or L.
And that changes a little too. Automotive sales. Dave, would you like to explain this one?
Well, the. Seven point six B two. Says in no event shall a business or use referred to in this section be established. If any part of the proposed building or structure will be within one thousand feet of any entrance to a public park or playground. School, college, place of worship, public library, or residentially zoned dwelling on the same side of the street.
So you can't have a gas station in Stafford.
Correct.
Correct.
And in fact, you can't even alter or expand a gas station in Stafford. So really that sort of the big Y application was sort of D O A and. So, really, that's sort of the big Y application was sort of DOA and I missed it.
What about Cumberland Forest?
Well, that's, that's the issue, that's in progress.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a couple houses around that within 1,000 feet.
So, um.
There's a church, there's.
Dave and I talked about that and we were working with the, the number of 100 feet of the entrance to a public park or playground, period.
100 feet?
When you think, yeah, in fact, David, I'd take that comma out. I'm gonna rewrite there, it's one comma zero zero, that's all. You see it? On the number two there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just circled that. Did you wanna discuss that further or you understand what, where that coming from?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it doesn't really talk about gasoline sales. You know, it talks about service stations, and typically a gas station 30 years ago was a service station. You know, now they're convenience stores, accessory to a gasoline sales.
Most of the places in town that have.
You know, I, I heard the argument from somebody who wanted to develop a gas station that it's, it's retail, selling gases, retail. No. And especially 'cause we have a whole section in our regulations that talks about service stations and gasoline sales, that obviously it's something that.
Well, most of the service stations in town were attached to either the house or disco response and, and just residents right on the same property.
So, I'm not sure what the intent of this 1,000 feet was.
I think that's been there for years, to be truthful. Can we look at number seven, Dave?
Yeah.
Were there, was there something else you wanted to change in there?
Which one's that one?
Number seven, in the unload of sales, it's the location within 200 feet. I've got maybe a 50 feet of any residential structure that dwells. Did you wanna change that maybe, or no?
Um, sure, I'm happy to do whatever you want.
Well. I don't know, Dave, I think.
You wanna make the, um.
Number seven?
Yeah.
Let's think about this, let's think this out here. There should be no exits or entrances closer than 100 feet to any road intersection, nor shall there be any business or uses referred to in this section proposed for location within 200 feet of any residential dwelling.
You wanna bring the 200 feet then? Change the 200 feet? I couldn't put a farm stand within 70 feet.
So, it's two, it's 200 feet from the dwell.
Dwelling.
Not from the property.
Did you wanna make it structure?
I did change that, but I got, I didn't do the red.
We get rid of dwelling, yeah.
What?
Get rid of dwelling.
Dwelling to structure?
Oh, yeah, okay.
I don't know, is that, does that change it really?
Well, sure, we'd say any residential dwelling structure.
Dwelling and blight people.
So, it wouldn't count, it wouldn't count a garage.
Mm-hmm, so go back to the, the 200 feet, 50 feet, 100 feet, what do you think?
Um, well, 200 feet is probably excessive, isn't it?
I think.
Oh, definitely excessive.
What?
Fifty?
It's fifty-two, too many.
Is that too little?
I think so.
100?
Structure is impartial.
Uh, 100 feet to any road intersection.
Well, that's just for traffic.
Right, for location, proposed for location within.
Yeah, for an intersection, you'd have to have a sightline clearance anyway, so.
So, this is automotive sales and repair, service garage and gasoline stations.
But how many of those are gonna be permitted though near a residential district?
Oh, there's several right now, but.
They're all.
Uh, Commonwealth.
Anywhere in, anywhere in town, you're gonna be within 1,000 feet of, of structures.
But is that what we want in the future also?
Not 1,000 feet, that's, that's excessive.
Right.
That's really excessive.
Yeah.
Well, you do have to still go through for the service stations has to go to the ZBA.
Right, and then they would need a DOT.
But they come to us for a gasoline sales, doesn't have to go to the ZBA, they come to us, but we still get to permit the location separately from the site plan requirements, just like the ZBA does now, we do that for gasoline sales. So, that gives you a little, to say, oh, it's right next to a church, you can't do that.
So, you have, you have 50 is too little, 200 is too much.
Yeah, I think 100, 100 of any residential dwelling structure is probably okay.
Okay, so 100? And, and you wanna insert the word structure?
I like that's the dwelling, those people, so.
Yeah.
I mean, a house could be a structure too, but.
Right.
You're covering more.
That was my only question.
So, will we call it residential dwelling structure?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, not dwelling structure.
Just residential structure.
Residential structure.
No dwelling, you know, okay. Otherwise, would you like to put this, um, and then it was added to the, uh, schedule of permitted main uses?
Yeah.
Gasoline sales. If the commission is okay with this, Doug, uh, we can put it out to the 27th. Yeah.
What you do with that?
And, let's see, I don't think, do you have any more new proposals?
No, I thought of one, but I forgot.
Yeah. Okay, new and other business, I guess in your packet, you found that, um, we have been, um, served notice of lawsuit.
I was looking, I had a comment on, I think so, on that one you were just on.
All right, let's go back, sorry. On what?
Do, do you not want to define how many vehicles damage can be stored on the property?
Where, I mean, which one are you on the?
Number eight. Eight under the, uh.
Under, under what's?
Well, at the top sheet of it.
On the automotive?
On the automotive, yeah.
Oh, okay, except for newer used auto sales operations, is that what you're talking about?
Vehicles parked or stored on premises, for periods exceeding 10 days are all damaged vehicles on the premises. When you have put the word all in, you could have 100. Do you want to define how many you can put on that piece of property? Behind a fence? Otherwise, you're gonna have a re, a huge repair shop.
Okay, now I understand what you're saying, definitely, um.
Well, the state makes you put up a buffer anyway, right, fence?
No, we had to remember with, with.
No, I know.
Well, you'd be operating a junkyard at that point.
That's right.
It's a junk.
So, you, you can't operate a junkyard without a permit and it has to be in the right zone.
And from those.
Well.
And this.
Junkyard definitely not permitted anymore. They're not permitted in the state of Connecticut, haven't been for years.
Is that right?
Yeah.
You're right, you're operating a junkyard, but what you're doing is leaving yourself wide open of how many constitutes a junkyard then.
Well, I, I, what I guess you're saying is if there's an accident, say it's an auto sales operation, there's an accident and they, they bring it to the garage and it's damaged and, you know, they tow it to the garage. And, um.
Yeah, but if he's, if it's a body shop and they're working with all kinds of insurance companies, you're waiting for the insurance company to come, we could have 20, 20 vehicles out there waiting for estimates.
Right.
And when you go to the back of bowls, they got carnage all over the place back there. But it's moving constantly.
I understand what you're saying, and also it has to be fenced, so it, it's not a, um, it's not a blight ordinance issue, 'cause it has to be fenced. The only thing is it, it may become an environmental issue, is that what you're thinking?
Well, that's, that's part of it, but I don't know. You gonna leave it there a year, you gonna leave it there two years? These vehicles piled up, whatever? Or you're waiting for parts?
All right.
No parts?
I've been working on a 68 Camaro for 12 years.
Yeah, less than your car.
How old is it now?
And now I gotta catch the bird's tree out of it.
I'm just saying. I don't, I think you need a limit on, on how many they can store in one spot before it becomes a junkyard.
It also depends on what area.
That's right.
Of the law.
Yeah.
I mean, you can't put 100 cars in a, to make a law.
I don't think it's been an issue in.
Hasn't been in.
So, I'm aware.
But I, I don't wanna. I don't wanna fit one. I don't really wanna be responsible for that.
Eight under the automotive. Section.
I just don't know how we could determine a number based on the size of the operation, Doug, that's my issue.
Yeah, you could start with a lot, like Dickies opposed to some place that, um, come on one staff ago. It's not quarter, but then you've got. I don't know, I'm just.
Yeah.
I don't know if I wanna touch it.
I don't think we need to touch it.
We don't? You agree?
That's just, I'm just.
You agree?
Yeah.
Okay, so, let's get back to the lawsuit.
I think they just named you.
Uh, no, they, the planning and zoning commission of the town of Stafford, this was not just me this time.
You do represent it, Doug.
Not just me this time. Um, Andrea Eldridge is the plaintiff in 27 Stafford Street. And she has listed, um, A through J issues that she had with our approving the application for the Milikowskis Farm Market.
Nancy, if I could just interrupt, first of all, on a procedural matter.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this lawsuit is subject to a motion to dismiss because she's, she's, she's indicated it's, she's serving it in the judicial district of Hartford, um, but then she's named Talon County, so.
And she's got the date there, Tuesday of February.
2018.
On the Tuesday of February.
Right, Tuesday of February 2018.
And this, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming this isn't served yet, because in Connecticut, you file the complaint first and then you serve it, so that's gonna have to be sorted out.
Well, he's been working, it's been served, yeah.
In Burford or town.
Well, and that's why you need to update us what's going on.
He should have known this, no? This guy here?
Yeah, he should have.
My shipment, yeah. So, um, bring us up to snuff.
So, I, so we've retained, um, we've retained Mark Brands to, um, represent us. I've sent the tape out for a transcription. We're hoping that the Milikowskis will file an intervenor status and protect their interest, because our interest is, we don't really need to spend a whole lot of money to protect their interest. It is an approved application, it is a special permit, that if they file it, it's a special permit. If somebody moves to stay that order, they could do that, but the order would be, you know, I mean, the special permit will be in effect. So, they'd have to make a motion to block that.
And that's what?
Use.
In the courts, they would do that in the court? Okay.
Certainly.
Did she, did she not get a card where it says failed to list a plaintiff as an abutting owner?
She was on the list of certified mailers, yeah.
Well, looking through it, I, I, I really.
I mean, we did, we did not, you know, make our findings like we did tonight. I mean, we may have had some technical defects, but nothing that I think a judge could really throw.
I agree, because I think the record, the record includes, you know, all of these considerations, so. Has, um, Mark Brands looked at this yet? Has he given you any sort of preliminary opinion?
No, 'cause he wants to see the transcript.
Okay.
And he'd like, he'd like the, um, the intervenors to take care of most of the work.
Yeah, but I, I mean, we shouldn't be asking the Milikowskis to, to pay, I mean, that, that, that's gonna create significant legal expenses for them too.
They've got approved.
Whatever.
I mean, obviously, that's, you know, that's something that they can talk with Mark Brands about.
So, Cindy, you're, you're an attorney and Dave, you, you worked many a time with this lawsuit. I thought that Mark Brands would just represent us in court and present our side, so what's this intervenor?
Well, he's got a right, he's got a right, I mean, what's our, what's our interest as a commission, somebody, somebody.
Right.
Well, I think our interest is to uphold a decision that we made, in fact, the very first decision we've ever made under these new farm regs. I think, I think we've got a great deal of interest in, in, in upholding our decision.
Well, we'll have to. Right.
But I thought there was a date, yeah, the 27th of February is the court date. So, um, depending on, well, that's just an appearance, I don't know, do they make a decision right away? No, no, so.
No, and this will get, you know, referred to the land use docket or it'll still stay in, stay in Talon and be behind everybody else.
Are you sure the 27th isn't the return date?
It's the return date, right.
So, there's, there's no appearance then, that's just the return date.
Oh, it's not, it's an appearance to me by entering.
And that's just the return date to submit the documentation of the service of summons and then something will be scheduled after that, so there's no appearance required on the 27th.
Well, no, it says to appear before the Superior Court for the judicial assistance.
This is incorrect, Nancy.
So, we gotta appear.
To be held, huh?
This is incorrect, look how incorrect this is.
I don't, I'm not a lawyer, so, I know, that's why. But it, when it said that immediately, 'cause I got it and I thought, Dave, I said, do I have to go to court February 27th? They said, no.
No.
So, but that's what it says, to appear at court on the 27th.
I mean, we're just getting, you know, into it.
Right, right, yeah.
And this, this will be two years before.
Yeah, we'll have a couple, we'll have a couple seasons of laws beyond that.
In the initial statement, where, where it comes to on the Tuesday of February 28th, did they leave a date out?
I think so.
Yeah, I do too.
Tuesday, February 2018.
Yeah, yeah, they left the date out.
I don't know.
Yeah, but now this is just really sloppy.
Very sloppy.
Do you know this lawyer? I do not.
You do not?
I do not, I looked him up online, he graduated from law school in 1962.
I think I'd send the back.
Okay.
He always won.
I think I'd send him back a note and ask.
It's older than your car.
Yeah, it's Tuesday.
It's Tuesday, I wanna, wanna deal with it.
Yeah. Well, let's just follow his way and then just wanted to make sure you all got a copy of it and, um.
But Dave, yeah, you could keep us informed as to, you know, where it says procedurally and.
I just think it's a shame because it's really costing the taxpayers money for a lawyer.
Yep.
Absolutely. When I do believe we've done our job, oh, good Lord.
You asked for it. That's nice.
Is that, I thought they didn't want to do that anymore.
Yeah, they want to do the, the gas station, but look what they're doing with the sign.
You had to work them up.
I'll work them up, I'll work them up.
So, you'll be seeing this pretty soon.
Mm-hmm.
There's a new Big Y gas station.
Oh.
So, that's not, there's no convenience store in there, right?
No, that was. No, yes, there is.
No, it's identical to what they have.
Oh, 'cause, no, the little.
No, you don't even go, you don't even go in, you, you have a drawer and that's it.
The drawer, like they do at Stop and Shop and all of those, yeah. Is that gonna be the golf, like they're talking and whatnot?
Look beautiful.
Oh, yes, I love it.
So, the also, I've been working with the, um.
Is that gonna be too rough for your book?
I've been working with the property next to the.
Basil's, yes.
That was, had a, um, this.
We're going to.
This is Jordan's place, this building over here.
What's happening?
You know, the, uh, careful.
Thing with those on.
So, they, they, they cut down all these trees and they made a retention basin back here and they piped in all the leaders into this retention basin that didn't. retention basin that didn't have any overflow or outlets or anything. And it flooded this guy back here, so the water goes like all the way back here. It also determined that this line was the surveyed property line that George used for years. And this guy decided this line was wrong and they went and they resurveyed and found that the line actually goes like this. So, George is losing like forty feet back here of parking. So, we've created this plan that takes care of the water situation by putting it all in the back here and piping it. We've gonna pave the front here and do some landscaping. This parking over here will be for Basil's, even though it's on his property, 'cause he owns both of them. And Sean back here is gonna give an easement to Basil's to park cars on his property.
Basil's is over here?
Basil's is here.
They're gonna double, and then... Where's the cell storage?
There.
All right, so Nowinski's house is here?
Yeah. With a common driveway to come in the back here. So, people will come in this way and this is one way here, you can't drive this way. So, you go in, pull in, back out, back out again. And Prue is gonna have his wife's beauty parlor in one of them. And so, this will be paved in the front and then you drive in here and park back here and come in the building this way or you can drive out to Basil's and park in here at nighttime.
So, this is the gravel area right now between Basil's and...
This is all gonna be milling.
Yeah, but this is the overflow now where they park.
Correct. Yeah, there's a telephone pole that's like right up here.
Also, the highway to Rose.
Yeah. So, I've been working with them for like, well, since they started flooding this guy and they cut off the trees down.
They never came for, you know, before they built it.
George is.
Yes, that's George, but anyway, now you're saying they're only gonna go this way, but...
What's to keep them from going?
Right, what's to keep them from doing that?
It's gonna be signage.
Yeah, right, as if that worked for the co-op.
Well, these people, you don't really come in this way anyway. These guys all go back here, you come in this way, the sign's gonna be over here for the business.
No, I'm saying there's nothing to deter them here.
Correct, and there's nothing to deter them from going this way also, so we got signs over here. 'Cause I'm worried about these guys coming through and drunk's coming through. So, we've done some striping and stuff.
Your profile.
This is not good.
No, but this is all paved, so we can like, we can stripe it somehow, do not enter, one-way only, right on the pavement.
Just like they say at Dunkin' Donuts, "Don't do not enter before we enter." I don't think that's gonna work, Dave, we gotta have something to stop that. Because as you said, if traffic's going every which way, don't you think? It's going this way.
You are working with them now, right, Dave?
Yeah.
So, you got a brown propane tank right by your parking lot, by your parking?
You couldn't get George to bury that?
Roasters, bollards?
They actually have an additional place that lived once already and it's acceptable to the fire marshal.
Right next to parking?
Are those bollards on the front?
Yes.
Why don't they one on each side, like right there and...
Right there.
Well, I passed it by the fire marshal and...
He was happy? He went out with the fire out.
He was over here.
I don't know, this looks so confusing, doesn't it, for the flow of traffic?
Well, it's not...
Is this final?
It's not as bad as it looks.
Okay, is this a final draft? They gotta come to us or...
No, they don't have to come to you.
It's approval.
This was, um...
Yeah, a week ago.
Yeah, the last revision was on the seventh, so that's a week ago.
Oh, he's already done the addition, so I'll just continue.
Well, he's not, I mean, the whole, you know, he wants to rent it and I don't know. So, this is a whole lot better than it is right now.
Yeah, so you can, um... Where's the handicap?
Oh, that's good.
One.
Well, he had three more parking spaces right up here, right?
No, I know, I've used that.
Right up to the road.
So, he has one handicap? That's another problem, is...
Well, this is how you get out of it, at the cross edge?
And this would be the walk into the restaurant, but this parking bit is open now, for Basil's. This from here back is Basil's parking lot.
This is Basil's, too, right?
Yes, this is here, you're looking at this that way.
Yeah.
And that is not for handicap?
Yeah.
Okay. I heard him say it's a walkway.
I think it's a walkway.
Well, there should be a handicap sign here.
Yeah, it's a walkway.
It's a walkway. I think it's a walkway to get into the parking.
Uh-huh, well, you go across the grass or whatever this is.
Yeah, that's all landscape, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, this isn't big enough.
Grass, what is that?
This isn't big enough for a handicap.
It's not wide enough, no.
What is that, I wonder?
I think it's supposed to be a handicap, but it's not wide enough.
I don't think so.
Well, where do you walk to then?
It's just pretty weeds.
Mark Mole's bed?
Yeah. There's another one over here.
With no curving, so you're just gonna put mark?
Well, that was part of my whole concept today, 'cause there's no curve. This is all milling, so he's gotta come up with some sort of like a fence or a landscape timber or something to stop people.
Well, you've got concrete curb here that goes into nothing, but there's no...
Yeah, no, okay.
You're just gonna put piles of mulch here and just let the water...
There's no legend for tell you what that is.
That's different, that's brick.
Or whatever it is.
Mark Mole's bed.
Where is?
I don't even see it. Oh, that's not that.
No, no.
There's no legend for that.
And what is this?
That's part of the shared easement thing.
Dave, you've had some fun, haven't you?
Yeah.
That and then a baffling. Like a walkway to nowhere.
Well, there's a few things you can go with them, I guess.
Yeah, there's no legend for that.
As you said, if they marked that corner down there with something, that'll alleviate a problem.
That's a hash for the van, that's not big enough.
Yeah.
There's no handicap sign when you decide that.
Right. There's no legend for that either, you're just guessing at it.
I mean, Russo had to draw it for something, it didn't just appear on the blank paper.
Well, it wasn't big enough for a parking area, so they filled it in. Right?
Well, maybe, well, that's an existing light pole, maybe that's protection for the light pole, so nobody parks there.
Yeah, there is a light pole there.
What's that next to there?
That legend is a...
It's right here, isn't it?
Opposed, that's a catch basin. All right, so this cut would be pitching the water into that catch basin.
Yeah.
Three inches here to here, to here.
I don't know what it is.
So, that's protection.
I think there is a, that's a light there.
But there is a pole here.
I think there is something here, too.
There's a pole to guy here coming down.
But he's using the same symbol as he was, it's for handicap, neither one of them was defined.
Well, it just seems like that that's protection for that pole, but without a bollard here, like you have here, what do you got for protection? All it is, you're just, you're aiming.
Well, that's a good question to ask, I'm happy.
We've been going round and round and round.
Definitely, this has been months, right?
Yeah.
So, I would say, I know what these are.
And this needs another bollard, one there and one there.
That's really scary right there.
Well, that's a...
Right now, they just have a couple little tiny mafia blocks in front of it.
Mafia blocks?
You mean they took the car over?
Jersey barriers.
Took the car over, right?
But that's what, a five hundred gallon tank?
I always use Ucon. I have no idea.
But it's not a thousand gallon tank, it's not that big, it's not like the one back here.
Well, I think you've done an excellent job getting this far, or Dave didn't even have a site plan, he had nothing.
I just wanna show him, right?
He did.
And so, but they're gonna give him that, this owner is gonna give him that piece of land?
No, it's an easement. And then he gets an easement back, so if he ever wants to use this, he can drain this way. I mean, there's a whole easement layout I can send for you. No, that's not a catch basin, that's just a manhole cover.
Manhole, okay.
Yeah, catch basin here, 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 these three.
And these all have perforated bottoms, so by the time the water gets down here, it's not...
Not gonna be anything like that. This is all, that's all sand in here, this is all sand, from here all the way to the crating is all sand.
Is there anything else, Dave?
No.
I have one more thing, the budget. What have we decided to, are we going to separate ours from the building department?
We can do that.
Okay. You had given me a proposed budget. Right now, we're combining building and zoning. And actually, Jing, she's the chairman of the finance, they've been working on procedures. And what they want to see is each department has their budget so that they can follow. So, she was thinking about that and she called me and I called Dave and he gave me this, what we are combining now and what really could be just us and what has to stay with, combined with the building department. So, it got a little confusing, so she called Mary, Mida, and the first select woman was also agreeable thought that she would like to have each department have their own line items so that we can track where we are at and if we need to, if we have any money over, maybe we can even encumber, wouldn't that be nice, et cetera? So, right now, the salaries are per contract together with the building and zoning, the uniforms. So, we can't separate that, so I guess that would go with the building, that you would have to work out with.
Well, we can separate that, that's okay.
You can separate half and half, okay. Our legal services are just what we use and we estimated five thousand, Dave did. Do you still think that's relative to what just happened enough?
No.
I think we probably...
We already spent that.
Well, we've got five thousand in legal and we've got five thousand in consulting.
Yeah, but we may need consulting, too, at some point.
Well, you don't have a P O C D on the horizon, you don't really have anything major going on. So, you really can move that money back and forth when we need to.
But we only have two thousand in the consultant, so that's a total of seven. So, maybe we should make it five and five, because the five, as you indicated, is not enough.
Well, where are you gonna pull the five from?
No, this is a proposed budget to go to the Board of Finance.
We can't get postage out of them, we're gonna get five hundred dollars out of it?
Yeah, could you put posters back in? No, I guess there's a, see, everyone has its own account, so the postage has its own account.
Actually, speaking of budget items, could we do something to get an easel in here? These poor applicants, when they're fumbling or unknown, that window sill, it's so unprofessional. But can't we buy an easel or something that...
I was talking to Lauren, she has to buy her own little pads to write on, they can't, where it freezes.
I looked at, yes, we'll get an easel.
You looked at different.
I looked high and low for today, for like an hour. And he showed up and I said, you know, I hope you brought an easel, 'cause I couldn't find money, he goes, "Oh, no, I love that window."
So, G I S mapping for a thousand, that's just us, isn't it, really? It's not the building department, is it? Should we put that under our own?
It's...
But isn't that mandated by CROG?
You know, they haven't really been charging us anything. I mean, we don't have a whole lot of changes and stuff and...
So, it's just there, it's just earmarked for CROG if they do charge us, and they haven't done it?
Well, I used it last year to buy my G I S software because the money was there.
Well, it makes sense.
But we've, the assessor sends in the updates and they've just been doing it, I mean, there are so few of them that... And really, they just take her file and process it.
So, like on the fees for the copier, you take half of that figure of fourteen hundred?
We just throw that all in together, 'cause we probably use more of it than they do.
Okay, so I guess then, um... I guess then, then we'll go with the Board of Finance Chair and the select woman would like to at least present just a zoning budget, planning and zoning budget.
Right, well, there's a meeting on the eighth or something.
The seventh, I believe.
Yeah, the seventh.
Do you need anything else from us except these figures that are on here, which you go with, you don't wanna increase anything?
No, I think the five and five is probably good for the consultant and the legal and...
Okay, 'cause it's five and two.
Yeah, I think I cut it down.
I think five and five, because they may cut us, so...
Well, you're gonna have to spend the legal fees no matter what.
No matter what.
The word is always good, right?
Right. Okay, so we don't need a motion or anything, it's just I wanted for your information, it was requested that we separate, so I think that's a good idea. Okay, is there any other further business? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
I made a motion to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you very much, everyone.